...to order for Monday, July 17th, 2017. Do you have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
Okay. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item next is four, public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Do we have any tonight?
I don't have anything.
Okay. If it's alright with the rest of the board, we have our newest police officer here and I'd like to move that item from 8A up so he can get back out and get to work. He's actually on duty right now. So if that's okay. Chief, if you want to bring Anthony up here and...
Come on in here.
I can come in.
Do you have a phone you want to take pictures with or you've got your hands full?
I got, I got.
Okay, alright. We should mic her up.
...be reading after me. I, Anthony Hearn.
I, Anthony Hearn.
Who has been appointed.
Who has been appointed.
To the office of full-time police officer.
To the office of full-time police officer.
With the village of Cottage Grove.
With the village of Cottage Grove.
Swear that I will enforce the state laws.
Swear I will enforce the state laws.
And ordinances of the village.
And ordinances of the village.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And I agree to faithfully discharge.
And I agree to faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That brings us to Agenda Item Six, Presentations to the Board.
Do the minutes first.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the minutes. Item Five, Discuss and Consider the Minutes of the Regular Village Board Meeting from June 19th. Any additions, comments, corrections?
Motion by Troy.
Motion by Larry to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Now we're at number six. Presentations to the Board. Polco, P-O-L-C-O, a technology company that facilitates surveys for citizen engagement. And you needed the screen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Also a quick introduction, sir. We have Nick here and Pat Cannon also helping out here with Polco. They're a technology company that essentially is helping communities with citizen engagement, would be the best way to kind of sum it up, through surveying that validates or verifies that who is responding and puts all that data together and can help us in an interesting way. So I guess with that, Nick, feel free to teach us some more here.
Well, thank you guys so much for having us over to share with what we're doing. We're a Wisconsin-based company, in fact, we're Dane County-based. And exactly as Matt said, our goal, what Polco does is civic engagement and the goal is to help citizens better, citizens and their local leaders better communicate on the issues. So if that means putting surveys out but then helping verify the respondents so that you know that this is sentiment coming from the citizens of Cottage Grove, or if that means just communicating in general and build a stronger community through communication, that's what we help do. And so I'm happy to share a couple screenshots, but a lot of what people think about it is as like a combination of a Survey Monkey, so you can put out questions and get verified responses. But then you also kind of collect a followership, almost like a Facebook or a Twitter, by those who are listening to what you put out there and it initiates conversations, so it builds a stronger community that way. So it's kind of like this communications feed like a Facebook but also kind of a verified Survey Monkey. And we won a few awards last year, we won the Governor's Business Plan, we won the Madison Chamber of Commerce. We recently were recognized as one of the most innovative companies in municipal technology space across the country and we're happy here and so we're excited to work with our local community as much as possible. There is a number of, in just your context, there's about, we offered a discount, a pretty substantial discount to Dane County City and Villages. If we had reached 12, we'd basically give a third of our already 50% kind of price off to the city, or give six months for free. And so we're at nine cities and villages in Dane County who are on and we're under review, you guys as one of the three. So we're planning to give to the discount, I mean, you know, the decision's obviously yours, but for planning purpose, some of them are already asked, so the goal is to provide... So with that, I'll give a little background of how it looks and works, but I want to be available to answer any questions about the tool.
And then Nick, just so you're aware tonight, it's just a presentation, it's a non-action item, just wanted to present the information then potentially be on the next agenda for other discussion and action.
Yeah, sounds good. So the goal is kind of a new tool and so we're happy to share with you how it looks and works. So let me see, actually, just... I might need to warm up for a second.
Sure.
So, as it does, I'll just, a little bit of background about who we are and what the company does. The inspiration behind the company was, so Alex, actually my co-founder, is here as well. We come from backgrounds in public policy and public service, we actually met while we were active-duty Air Force. And so we cared about public policy, we also liked technology, we worked briefly. I was with Amazon, Alex was with Google, and we said, "What can we do to combine the two? How can we bring technology to better, to foster improved communications and operations in local government?" And so we joined forces, there were some folks down in Texas and said, "We'd like to see you build that." We started there and we moved to Wisconsin about a year ago. My wife is here too, is originally from Wisconsin. It was high civic participation rates, we just thought it was a great, you know, strong community, would be a great place for us to build and grow the, to build and grow the company. Just a couple slides. You know, when we were down in Texas, some cities came up and said, "This is how our city council meetings look." We know how these, you know, these few folks feel on issues, we want some way to broaden the input, to get more folks involved, but how can we do that so it's not necessarily more noise? So what we do is we try to get more input, more balanced input, and then we verify that input so you can know it's somebody actually from the community and not somebody 10 times. It can be, without Polco, it can be difficult to get that balanced input, there's a lot of communication channels, you can try phone polls but you're missing the end or demographics, postcard mailers can be slow and expensive, social media, you have no way of verifying those accounts. So all these attempts can be confusing and citizens then don't engage. And then if they don't engage, it's harder to cite data to chart the right path forward for a city. So that's the problem that we try to solve. There's a couple tools who get close, you know, a lot of cities are using Survey Monkey but at the same time, that's not verified. I don't know if those are people in the city, I don't know if they're voting 10 times. It is easy and it is online, so we want to combine that ease of online speed with the citability and rigor that a Gallup could be, but at a much lower cost. Gallup can be very expensive for a city. So the way that it works is just a three-step process, we make it really easy, it's a Google Forms-like process and there are a few fields and that posts a question on Polco. But we want broad input, so citizens just don't have to come to Polco, we're not picky. We make this question or e-ballot embeddable on third-party, so you can put on the city website, if there's an e-newsletter, if there's a local media newspaper, you can put it there or embed in social media. So we literally try to go out through as many channels as possible for broad feedback. Even though we do that, we can still ensure nobody's voting multiple times and limit the responses to those in your city because when everything comes back in, we cross-reference against the voter file. And so we let anybody respond, but then you can filter the results and say, "Okay, that's great, but let me, I just want to make sure I'm listening just to Cottage Grove residents on this one." And so what that does is you can see the overall Cottage Grove results and then since it's connected to the voter file, that also allows us to do the breakdowns. You know, if you wanted to look at different parts of the city, different precincts, if that were ever helpful. And same thing, we also provide a civil commenting structure, so citizens, after they vote, can also comment. We can only interact with comments one time for those on your same side. And so this simple barrier mitigates a lot of like anger and vigilance and what it does is the crowdsourced commentary that we've seen coming has been really helpful, not only to the villages but also to the citizens. And so you can see the breakdowns of the votes and then you can also filter the comments to make sure those are also from the village. So this, the way we've designed it is to help improve, get good input that resides in the community.
So you mean someone that's against can rip on someone that's for?
Exactly, yeah. We're just trying to make it civil, so if I am for an issue and I vote yes, then I can go and I can log a comment on the for side, but I can't go over to the no's and yell at them or vote up a dumb argument or anything. All I can do is vote yes, post a comment if I want to, or if I think there's already a good comment in there, I can upvote that. And then to the top, we display the strongest, most upvoted comments of both sides.
So like the best, so you see like at the top, the best argument for and the best argument against?
Yeah, yeah, so people can be exposed to those good reasons. And so that's it in a nutshell, that's the way it looks and works. I'm happy to put up a live demo of a couple cities and villages who have launched, we see it working great. But just at the end of the day, our overall aspiration with Polco and we think, we hope that we can share it is, we think this is good government, we help, we think this builds stronger community for the local government side. This is broad authenticated, you know, automatically organized data to give confidence, you know, and if it is what the local few want, if it's not, then you can say, "Hey, we know how you feel, we also know how a lot of other people throughout the community feel." And then on the citizen's side, it's really nice, it's empowering. I know I have two young kids, I can't always make it to city council and I know there's important things going on. And so now I can have a say in a way that I know is being heard and not immediately dismissed because they know it's from somebody in the community.
Something to add, Nick, I would say, what I found interesting is it's not just a question that gets put out there, you put maybe a staff report with it, so, because it would be easy to slant a question if you just said, you know, "Would you like a new municipal pool?" Well, most people, a lot of people would just say yes to that, but what would be the tax impacts and all of that? So you would have that background information in that, you know, you click read more and you'd learn what actually goes into that, so you couldn't necessarily just slant the question to get a response you'd want.
That's it, yeah. Our goal is not only to build stronger community through better balance and better participation but also to help inform the community. So just as Matt said, not only do we make these e-ballots and these questions broadly accessible through multiple channels, but if any question, a citizen says, "Hey, this is interesting, I know it's important, I want to learn a little bit more," relative to a Survey Monkey, which is just a question, that question behind it also has a full details page where you can learn more information about it as well as see that crowdsourced commentary. So we'll take a quick look, so Dane County was just asking whether or not people are forward renaming the building, but we said, "Well, what is the city-county building? Where is that?" So we'll pull this up and what this is bringing up is that question's background details page. And so you can see on this question here, oh, okay, that's that building, this is a live link to the map and so right away then people can see, it's not just fostering better participation, but it's also then giving people access to the background, to better inform them.
Well, and at a village board meeting or a committee meeting, staff could provide this information in a staff report so the board could see for this particular item. Just some additional information, you know, there were 200 responses to this and 170 people were against this item, whether right or wrong, just more information.
Yeah, that right there at the top is just an export, PDF export of the results, you can include top comments if you'd like to as well. And so what that has in it is not just the overall breakdowns like we see here, so in Dane County on this, there were 158 respondents today, that's not that old. 114 of those we matched as verified citizens of Dane County. The percentages line up pretty closely and so this is one of the elements that would be in that report. And then you can also just, you know, want to make sure that the community at large is pretty represented on this, if you want to check. You know, I know Verona put up a question about an aquatic complex and said, "Maybe we don't have, you know, old people weighing in on this." So let's the whole check and we did it and they had several in their 70s, they even had an 82-year-old respondent, but if you wanted to just make sure you're getting a broad swath of the community, these are good ways to check. You know, and so obviously for the county, we can take a look and say, you know, if a county board member wanted to check their constituents and then on the ages too, we can do the breakdowns there. So, you know, it's been exciting for us to build, we're passionate about this as we were about our former military career, we think this is an exciting way to bridge, there's a lot of potential and excitement at the local level, so we're excited about building this but hope that it's also potentially useful to the community. We're glad to call this home, we're growing across the country, but this is our home turf and so we want to make sure it's helpful to anybody here. And so as, you know, if we were to work together, if you ever had questions or comments, we're excited about building a user group, want to incorporate your feedback as we continue to grow.
How many Wisconsin municipalities is this in now?
So we should be launched or approved by the end of this month with 18 cities and villages and counties across Wisconsin.
With the majority of that in Dane County?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board for Nick?
If you're on now with the results, is that public, where everybody sees it after they vote, or is that just for our?
Just for your.
Okay.
I mean, you can share that if you want to, just but off the bat, it's just for city staff, you know, like this.
And then something for the board to think about for a future meeting, this, the expense for this, approximately $250 a month, as that always comes out to Nick, would be eligible to, as a expense to our cable franchise fee fund, so it would not come out of tax dollars, it would be funded by the cable franchise.
The deal with the Dane County is, or pricing normally advertises as 500 a month and, you know, at 6,000 a year, this would save a lot of money over a lot of verified surveys that a lot of communities do, as well as continue to grow that followership. So for our home turf, we've discounted to 250 a month, which for a year is 3,000. And then as part of the, you know, we're working with several together on, you know, timeframe over the next couple of months, so as part of that group moving together, we've also offering another one-third off, so it'd be 2,000 for you.
Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, thank you guys for your time, appreciate it. (inaudible) Great parents of the kids, so I... Thanks for...
Thank you, thank you. Next item is six PR updates from the Chamber of Commerce, if, Mike, if you want to come up here and, thank you for doing this.
Alrighty. Thanks for having us in tonight, I'm Mike Miller, the president of the Chamber of Commerce here in Cottage Grove. Just wanted to come and give some updates on what we've been doing this year, what we have coming up in the next six months, and then also with some of the new board members, we wanted to touch on where we're at with our identity and branding study that was a joint effort between the village of Cottage Grove, Town of Cottage Grove and the Chamber of Commerce. So Kristin Rungy is here from UW Extension, she'll be sharing some information on where we're at with that, our timeline and so on and so forth. So, real quick, just to give a high-level update, I would say the Chamber's motto in the last 18 months is growth. We've gone from about 100 members in 2015 to 164. So we've had pretty substantial growth in membership. We have our first paid staff member this year, Paula Seiverson, who couldn't be here tonight, is our part-time executive director, she does a wonderful job. We're currently reviewing some different options at putting a permanent location into Cottage Grove for a Cottage Grove Chamber office and also adding full-time staff, if not an additional part-time staff, in the coming couple of months to year. So very excited about our growth. Another aspect of the physical location is we're delving into a little bit with Wisconsin and tourism and communities and hope to work with Matt and Aaron a little bit on that avenue as well. So a couple of new events I just wanted to update, probably some of you have seen, we kicked off a Marketplace Days event this year, this is new to Cottage Grove, it has a Maxwell Street Days flavor. We did the first one in June, the next one's a Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 PM, it's in the parking lot of Piggly Wiggly and the businesses over there. It's supposed to support our Cottage Grove First, let residents know what businesses are in Cottage Grove. We have several vendors that set up booths, there's entertainment, food and those types of things. Really good feedback off of the first one. We'll also have one on August 19th as well. So September of 2017 is the Chamber of Commerce Month in the state of Wisconsin, we're going to be doing something with that and we're hoping to announce some of our future plans with some of our growth at that time. So, any questions at all, or anything of that nature? Okay. So I'm going to get into, and I'm going to have Kristin talking a little bit, appreciate the time tonight. Identity and branding study, so this really came out of a joint venture with UW Extensions with Madison United Rugby, we're pursuing a business development plan for their proposal and we met with the village and town board and discussed this. One of the things that we're really hoping to do is really get a clear, concise answer in people's minds of what is Cottage Grove? That was kind of the question that we were posing and you got a lot of answers back. So our first part of this process was a survey activity, so it was interesting to follow Nick and his group, so I'm sure you found that very interesting. But that's completed, that was the mail-out survey and Kristin will have more of the results to share with you, raw data. Our next step is really to launch a focus group in Cottage Grove and we have several residents who are interested and committed. We'll be looking to really kick that off in August, we'll be looking for maybe a village participant from the government level. So that's going to, that group's really going to be working with Kristin to develop and flush out from some of these resident surveys, what is Cottage Grove and also what do people want it to be? So we're very excited about it, this is a long-term process, it's not a just complete the survey and put it on a shelf, it's a commitment to really, you talk about community and communication and togetherness, I think this was a great exercise in that and I think you'll see in the survey results, I was very proud of what our community had to say about Cottage Grove, I thought actually it was pretty uplifting to read what people wrote. So with that, I'll let it go to Kristin and...
Thank you. And I'm going to pass these out if that's alright. What I'm giving to you are folders, my card is included in one side of these, but this is a summary of the survey, top-line summary. On the left-hand side, when you open it up, right-hand side, take that back, there is a staple packet that gives you an idea when we did the first swipe of analysis for this. Mike, do you mind if I borrow yours when I...
No.
I did the first swipe analysis of what residents said about Cottage Grove. Now this was a random sample survey that we drew using methodology from UW River Falls, who actually assisted us with the survey. A random sample survey of Cottage Grove residents, we did it January 27th is when the first survey went out, January, by the time February 23rd rolled around, we had completed a total of 447 surveys, which gives us a confidence level around 4, 4.5%, which was outstanding. We expected this to take two months, Cottage Grove residents apparently liked the survey and returned it really quickly, so that was a good start to it. On the first one, we just asked residents, when you were deciding where to live, which things were important to you, and I've listed those on here, number one. If you flip the page to number two though, I think this is what Mike was referring to and this was, to my perspective, as somebody who worked with a lot of different communities around the state, exactly what you want to see when you survey a community. We asked residents, "How much do you agree or disagree that people in this community, Cottage Grove, their own community are?" And then we answered on a 1-5 scale, with 1 disagree strongly, 5 agree strongly. So the number one item is friendly, number two trustworthy, number three, watch out for another, number four, have a wide variety of viewpoints. So when we look at this, we think that based, we don't think, we know based on the results, that the people who live in Cottage Grove have a sense of community, they believe one another, are friendly, trustworthy, got a great wide variety of viewpoints. It's a really good result and this is what the center of our branding effort is going to be. This is the survey here, so I'll hand that back to you, Mike. I'll let you guys read over the rest of it, when you look at the rest of the results, you'll see that there's a whole variety of questions in there, everything from media use to voting, to often do you count or contact public officials? But the branding process that we're going to go through is using this as the center and we're drawing a group of volunteers together. Once we get meetings started, which we're taking a little bit of a break since it's summertime and people are busy, we're going to meet over eight weeks, four meetings over eight weeks to review the survey and identify which messages the group of volunteers drawn from Cottage Grove residents feel best speaks about Cottage Grove as a community to those outside the community. How do they want to message this? How do they want to use these results to really represent who Cottage Grove is? And so that's where we're headed.
So, thank you. So, you know, any questions, please ask, Kristin, but to summarize a little bit of what this is, to my understanding, we were the first community in Wisconsin to go down this road and now there are several other communities.
Yeah, Belleville is doing a branding study right now and beginning work on theirs, the community of Princeton and I've got a couple of other communities up north that are going to be launching this exact survey because based on the results, we thought that this is a really good way of getting residents to talk about how they identify themselves as a community.
So, and just to give one quick background, and we didn't want to go line by line out of respect for the time of this meeting on the results, but we really appreciated the village's partnership on this and we wanted to give you the raw data if you could use this in any way for anything that you're doing that may not be directly related. For the benefit of the new trustees, this, everything we've done in the chamber that we've invested money and time and effort into really came from a 2015 study that was tracking leakage of dollars being spent out of Cottage Grove. And I'm not going to go into full details, but we'll just use 80%, roughly 80% of local dollars leave the community. Not totally surprising because we are a community located next to a major market. However, it was a little higher than what I would think we would call our comparable neighbors. So when we met with UW Extension and also Veerbicker and Associates who did the study, one of the real considerations was a bi-local campaign, we launched the Cottage Grove First campaign. Another consideration, there's some others that Matt and I and Aaron have discussed, but one of them was really what is Cottage Grove and is there the sense of that business community? And this was an area that we thought could really help our businesses, which is really what the Chamber is here to do. So, we're very excited about it, we are going to present to the town board the same information in early August, so really excited for the partnership on this. After the focus groups completed, there's going to be a brand book kind of done by that group that'll flush out what really the Cottage Grove brand is starting to look like. There'll be another presentation that everybody will be invited to that'll be more kind of pomp and circumstance and here's the unveiling of this project, but we wanted to come back and update you and appreciate your support on it and we know there's some new faces here that we thought would like to know what's going on. So, appreciate all the partnership from the village board to Matt and Aaron, have been great to work with in the Chamber, really appreciate the Cottage Grove Police and Fires help with the community programming that we do, including the event this weekend, so thank you very much for your time. Any questions for any of us? Yes?
Standard deviations appear to be quite large on a lot of these, would you please explain?
Yeah, they do, which ones are you looking at? Am I going to steal these?
I'll just throw that at Kristin.
So the first one, if you look on, the first one that jumped out to me when I was doing the analysis, on item one, when you go down to the third line, quality of local schools, the average there, the mean is 3.10 and the standard deviation is 1.06, meaning that our normal range, what we would consider within the normal range, goes from about 2 to about 4 on a five-point scale. That can be, that one in particular can be explained by age. Folks who are in the community and don't have children in the school system anymore, rate that a little bit lower. At one point in life, it's a life stage effect, the quality of local schools... doing the analysis, on item one, when you go down to the third line, quality of local schools, the average there, the mean is 3.10 and the standard deviation is 1.06, meaning that our normal range, what we would consider within the normal range, goes from about 2 to about 4 on a five-point scale. That can be, that one in particular can be explained by age. Folks who are in the community and don't have children in the school system anymore, rate that a little bit lower. At one point in life, it's a life-stage effect. The quality of local schools is extremely important, might be the reason they located here 20 years ago or 25 years ago. Might be somewhat of the reason that they stay, but if you're 60 or 65 and you don't have kids in the schools anymore, perhaps the reason you're staying is because this has become your community. And the school quality is not the primary reason that you're located here anymore. So, we can see that in a number of ones. Some of the other ones, if you go over to item three as well, we see a real big swing in some of these standard deviations. Playing in a sports league has a really wide standard deviation. Attend a youth sports, music, or arts event. Again, these are probably life's, what we call life-stage effects in survey analysis and in public opinion. We're at a certain point in our life, we might do some of these things more than others. We might play in a sports league when you're younger, before we have children, or after our children are old enough to babysit themselves. It's the case with many of us. So, we see those swings that can be kind of somewhat easy to explain. Because this is a top-line, we're just glossing over the overall results for these, but a lot of these are, when we step back and look at it, what I would consider pretty typical. Does that help? You got specific, is there one that you have specific?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how much confidence I should put in your figures based on your standard deviations.
Yeah, so, we're within 4, because it's a random sample survey, we're within 4.5%. So, it's not so much an issue of confidence because there is deviation within it. Within any population, we'll see answers aren't necessarily always going to be really close. It just might be that there is a natural variation in how much people do some of these activities based on, and this could be actually completely, totally representative, but if we have a group of 55-year-olds, a group of 35-year-olds, and a group of 25-year-olds answering the same, and we do have a very good age range across this, they're going to be doing those things in quite wide variations.
Is it possible to drill down and see specific demographic information for each one of these answers?
Yeah. And if you have ones that you're particularly interested in, the reason I put my card in there is this is your data. My help comes along with the data. So, if you wanted to send me an email with specific questions that you have, I can actually get you the data pretty easily. Yeah, we can break it down by age, by gender, by income category, whether they vote or they don't vote. Everyone in Cottage Grove votes, so that's actually a crazy good voter turnout and civic participation. So, we have only very few people who say they don't vote. That one we're a little skimpy on, but yeah. So, we have those answers readily available if you'd like them.
And Mick, to your point too, I think those are good questions. You know, this is a part of a larger process. So, this isn't like the be-all, end-all, we paid for this exact data. We just felt in the chamber that since the Village and Town were partners, we wanted to provide everything that we received from UW Extension. We didn't know if you guys could use this in any other, you know, kind of way, shape, or form for something else that you're doing. So. Great.
All right.
One last thing, I was going to just, real quick. In November of this year, I'll be stepping down as Chamber President. John Lefler from Bankasun Prairie will be taking over as Chamber President. He's also on the Cottage Grove Fire Department recently. We're very excited to have him. He's going to be well-positioned to lead the chamber even further and really take it in some exciting places. So, I'll be actually, you know, hopefully introducing him and sitting down with Matt and Aaron and start some of the transition stuff for that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
If I may ask this question, Mike?
Yeah, yeah.
We've had some groundbreakings and some new businesses opening in the Village. And apparently, we may not be on the right email list. A picture from the 29th of June, groundbreaking over here at the bank. No Village officials are there because apparently nobody knew about it. I think it's somewhat embarrassing. Is there another list we should be on to know of when these events? The other one was from 7/22, the Rainbow Daycare grand opening.
So, if you're a member of the chamber, you get all the chamber emails and those are generally included in chamber emails. The other option would be that we could work out a specific way to make sure that we're emailing above and beyond to the Village that information. In reference to the Wisconsin Bank and Trust, that one, I'm not sure what happened. That one was invitation by their bank. So, but I'm not sure what happened on the others. So, I apologize for that.
No, no, I'm not blaming you. I just want to make sure that we're informed, because I think that these types of things, the Village needs to have.
You know, I think too, what Troy, the best thing for that would be, I can have Paula, our Executive Director, maybe just send a specific email to whether Matt or Aaron would like to receive that.
I was just doing a search and for some reason, I get in my inbox, the RSVPs for the meetings themselves, but some of the others end up going into a clutter junk folder and I check those like once a month.
So, our main form of communications, constant contact through like an e-newsletter? And I think I actually, it goes to my Edward Jones and it goes into my spam folder as well. And I can't change my corporate settings or whatever, so I have to go fish it out. So, great point. I think that's, yeah, I agree with you that, and I think there's a way we could probably do that better and just maybe shoot it, if it's okay to shoot it to Matt or Aaron, that hey, this is like an economic development.
Well, right. We'd want to have, you know, at least one staff person, maybe someone from the board or something.
Right. I'll let Paula do that.
Sure.
So, that's no problem.
That'd be great. Like I say, it's just, I don't want to have someone with the impression that we don't care about this stuff or anything and knowledge is power.
It was not a secret, no Village party. I just, it was not. So, thank you. Good, thank you for bringing it up, though. I appreciate it. So. All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, thank you.
All right. Bring us down to item number seven, unfinished business. Update on vacant Village properties. Presentation by staff on five-year space needs. It's in your packet, fairly detailed. Matt, I'll let you.
Sure. There's a series of memos. Staff met to, well, first, we sent out a message for individual departments to put together their thoughts and then met as a group to compile that and to put it all together and then Aaron put on his architect hat and he'll be going through some of those options on potential site plan configurations. I'll just start at Village Hall. So, within Village Hall, there's an administration department, myself, there's finance, clerk, and then planning and development. Within the next five years, Village Hall shouldn't need to add more than two full-time equivalents. And I didn't break those down per department because there's some efficiencies. What I mean by that is, when you answer that question within one department, in five years, I might, I may, myself, may think that an assistant administrator or planner may be beneficial. Aaron may also, if he's looking at it just on his own, might think one full-time. But, that's a position we could likely combine. So, it's more likely a half for each, similar to Lisa as Village Clerk and Deb as Treasurer. We likely don't need to add a full position for each of those, but likely a support position of some sort. So, that would be another full-time position to, that would be built half towards Treasury and half towards clerk, for example. Within that configuration, we should be able to just reconfigure the main room in Village Hall, add a couple cubicles. Shouldn't need any kind of expansion or space within five years here. However, and Lisa could maybe add to this discussion, but we should have an alternate polling place at some point and for certain elections, presidential elections, this space gets rather tight. And when you look a little bit further, within the five-year timeframe, say three to four years down the road, it would likely be good to begin planning a small expansion of this building. And Aaron can touch base on how that might look, but just a small 1,200 to 1,500 square feet moving west from this building. And that would add some offices. It would reconfigure this meeting room. So, that kind of covers Village Hall. Village Hall's a little more simple. Within the Municipal Services Building and the adjacent land there, we project within the next five years, Parks and Recreation would likely add 1.5 employees, Public Works 4.5, and the Police Department 1. Within its current footprint, the Police Department does not need any additional space within five years. Public Works and Parks and Recreation Departments will need some new office space. However, this could be constructed within the current footprint of the building. There's unfinished space of about 15,000 square feet for future expansion within the building. Then, probably the largest need is additional storage. The Village lost some significant storage from the lease that we used to have through the Houston's with the Police Department. There was some Public Works equipment that used to be stored there. And as the Village continues to grow, adding new equipment like a leaf vac, additional plows and things like that, a new bucket truck, there's going to be need for some additional space. So, the Public Works and Parks and Recreation would like to see an addition either at the Municipal Services Building or somewhere else for approximately 15,000 square feet of space for storage. And again, Aaron can go over how that might look. And then, looking at the Bonnie Road property, which is the former Public Works property, just some maintenance items there, the roof and the HVAC system, and then some parking lot repaving and things like that would need to be looked at. So, just to summarize again, within five years, some architectural and financial plans would be good to be looked at for Village Hall, for a 1,200 to 1,500 square foot expansion. Within the next few years, architectural and planning to look into some office, essentially remodeling work of the Municipal Services Building. And then, 15,000 square feet of storage for large vehicles and equipment, what is probably the primary need in the next five years. So, with that, Aaron can walk through some of the site plan options.
Can you put them up on the screen here so I can see them one better? First bench here is the existing conditions here at Village Hall, looking at it in terms of site plan. The additional space that Matt mentioned, we'd probably work best on this end, so that would be pushing this wall out this way. The structure kind of runs this way across this room, so it's easier to skip out and justice that way, as opposed to punching out front or back.
If we were to do that, do you need to add any parking spaces?
I don't think so. I think we're pretty well set for parking. Every time it really starts to fill up is for the polling, for the election days. We wouldn't lose any of it this way either if it's within the grass that's up here. So, this is the existing floor plan. This is the boardroom where we are. The office is over here. This is the front office. This is the back.
Aaron, maybe just a little bit longer for this.
So, this would be the added space over here. In order to, you couldn't really just put offices just in the addition because you wouldn't be able to get to them, you'd have to cut through the boardroom. So, the boardroom is reconfigured or the east-west direction like this with the corridor and additional offices and storage along the back. This room, I think, would be slightly bigger than what we have now, a little bit more, a little bit longer and not quite as wide. So, in terms of elections, I don't think, could add a lot more election equipment, but I think Lisa said there is some advantage to having a hallway, more people can line up inside of these. Most of the existing area would stay pretty much the same. Deb did say that she'd like an enclosed office because she does personnel things that are sometimes better for a private conversation. And with some rearranging, I think we could get a couple of extra workstations in the current open office space. So, this, I think, is fairly straightforward. There may be some tweaks that a real architect would do differently, but I think something like this would take care of us for a while. This is the site plan for the existing Municipal Services Building. These are the other two parcels that the Village owns. The addition that Matt mentioned would be off this side, some additional parking and then extending parking along this way. This addition would be more or less the size of the garage and you see this better in the floor plan of the garage space that's there. This would leave about a 200-foot deep lot on this side for, again, longer-term expansion or say, or if that's what the board decides. 200 feet, I think, is still enough depth to make that a fairly usable lot. I probably wouldn't suggest going too much less than that if the desire is to sell it. This would be the existing layout as it is now. Police down here, parked in Public Works, offices here, garage here. This one is intended as a Public Works work area, but I think it's kind of become kind of a part-time garage at least. This one is space that's rented by Clarkport. This one is vacant except for the new generator. Let's see what's.
Could you differentiate between a Public Works area and a garage? What would be happening there?
Essentially, the area is not always like a Public Works area. It doesn't, wasn't made with four drains and it wasn't meant for nothing, equipment to be in there, but essentially we overflowed into that area with some things.
There's a welding, there's some, there's one kind of open space, office room for people to come in and do some paperwork. There's some lockers and things like that, but yeah, it's not a, it's generally for maintenance. There's a maintenance bay for vehicles and things like that.
So, looking ahead, a possible way the space could be used in the future, utilizing the two extra bays that aren't being used now. Right now, everybody comes through this lobby, go one way to the police, the other way to Public Works or Parks. The best way I could see to do it would be to have two separate entries. I know there's been some, at least during the design of that space, there were security issues that had to be addressed. It might actually be better to have a distinct police entry and a distinct Parks and Public Works entry. So, the reception area for Parks could be flipped over to this side, Public Works here, and then a lobby going into a larger meeting space here. That could be the second polling place for the Village. Could also be used as a whole or maybe divided up for recreation activities.
And it would be a more secure entrance for Parks and Recreation activities and right now, they enter from the back of the building to get in there. And so, this could be maybe more, a more secure way for those classes and things like that.
Certainly a lot more logical if you're showing up for a class that should be coming through the front. Plenty of space left over for additional offices. Whether some of these became storage or conference rooms or something like that would be decided later, but there's room for at least, it's like nine, pretty good size, enclosed offices with some open office space for cubicles or whatever here. It would also allow an easy pass-through from the existing Public Works areas to the new garage. As I said, this is roughly the size of the existing garage minus the Sallyport. This notch is here because there's a large, I don't know if it's empty for exhaust, but going into the generator that would need to remain. Also, some of the meters and equipment are outside here. So, whether the space needs to be that deep or not, again, I don't know. Some clear area would be needed there. To add, I think this accommodated the needs for.
A long time.
For foreseeable future.
For Public Works, I mean, I was in the Bonnie Road property and I know that you have a significant space need there. You've got like two dump trucks and then loader, a couple of wood chippers and machinery. So, this would accommodate all of that.
If this were to happen, and Bonnie Road is gone today, I think this is more than that.
If this were to happen, and Bonnie Road is gone today, I mean, this is more than for about ten years from now, it still could, but that, that, a lot of that remains to be seen.
Just makes sense, you have all the public works under one building and one garage.
Does that mean we get rid of one that's on Cross Street though?
In Bonnie Road.
I guess, I mean, if this were to come true, yeah, I think that would be reasonable.
Because that was my question. Next question is Bonnie Road with keeping with the upcoming materials that are needed and things like that. There's a lot of money for it.
Should we get rid of all of those?
Right, on Bonnie Road.
Erin, here's your reason rather than going and taking up some of the space in these open lots that we can't go north. Seems like there's a lot of space between the property line and the building, you know, coming this, this direction when you go back to the aerial shot.
Yeah. If we could speak to all that space.
That would never chop up the other two lots that we can sell and get more money for. Can you go to the aerial there?
Thanks.
Well, for the public works thing, we keep one big trailer out there, and then we have three bins basically with, one's our street steepings. Before we have enough to haul to the landfill, we, we have a storage bin there that makes the streets so we can use. Some stone that we use around the different park areas and the, the, keep different things in the other bin, but right now, I believe it's the, the engineer board trips for the playground. But, so along that west side there, that's pretty much all it is, all the back to the property line at that point. And the way it's configured now, there's staff parks back there, then a lot of the programming that's parking lots, well, in the mornings, then I'm assuming late at night too for the programs to come into, to a park area.
Literally during the day that parking lot, that whole space there is filled up now?
Well, not the whole thing, but along the western end, it's in the property line, yeah.
You'd never think it'd be easier to put it that direction than this direction, we'll get more, more money for the two L lots.
One thing that did come up in our internal discussions is, does it make sense to move all the village hall functions over here as well? But I think, given that we didn't really need a whole lot of renovations to this building or company, I think it really makes sense, but there might be some advantages to that in terms of computer networking and just overall communication between departments, but whether that's enough to cause a whole move.
It's just another thought, that's all.
I guess as an example, I use like the building at McFarland where they've got kind of everything under one roof, one building to maintain, not several and that kind of thing, just long-term expenses and things. Okay.
Thank you.
Matt, thanks to staff for putting this together. I mean, it's good to have an idea of where we're at, what we need. Like I said, I've been in the Bonnie Road property. I wasn't really too sure what was going on, and if you walk in and you realize how much space is really needed. Trucks don't have to be inside, but I think it keeps resale value better and it's better for the equipment to be inside.
So, now that you've had an opportunity to kind of put this all together, how do you guys feel about, I, I know you had expressed some concerns about you guys not being professional future planners. Do you guys, once you sat down and looked through everything, do you feel a little bit more confident about things? Or, we had discussed, was it, was it McFarland or another municipality that had brought in the professionals to do that?
Yeah, McFarland just finished the process of, with an architect engineer. Yeah, I, it's, it's hard to completely describe it, but the deliverable that you would get from a professional firm, you know, like, you know, we put together some, I like to think, some good information. But it doesn't, it wouldn't even be close to what the deliverable would be from, from professionals. And, you know, we, we have no idea how, you know, a lot of, some of the things that are proposed might not even be possible or even best practices, and we don't know costs and things like that. So, but, I think for, working on it for a couple of weeks and presented, I could help further the discussion.
It's good information. I, I was kind of steering towards whether or not there might be some advantage to bring somebody in from McFarland or the group that McFarland worked with to do a small presentation for the board, just so we could see how much more information they got, so we could better determine if it's something we want to do in the future.
Yeah, I can certainly touch base with their.
Of course, to the board as a whole.
I can't know too much, you gotta have information.
I can, I can reach out to their administrator if that's what the board would want, and I, I don't know, maybe not the, the architecture engineer firm, because even if the board wanted to go that route, you, you would do a request for proposals and hear from a bunch of different folks, but maybe from McFarland staff, their, their administrator and one or two other staff people that were involved in the project.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you, you presented a lot of really solid information and I, I think it gave us a good look, but I'd be interested in maybe ten years or, or even more down the line, because I hate to.
I think you can push it to ten after that. It's a little harder to determine, but pushing it to ten might, maybe that's how far out they look, I don't know. Maybe it's worth looking into. All right? All right, that brings us down to seven B, discuss and consider selection of a listing agent for village-owned residential lots. And Matt has in his packet here a list of, I think, six people.
Yeah. If we could maybe just go, step back and just make, make sure that direction's clear is, because like, you know, I heard from Forrest and yourself on that, does the rest of the board, you know, what, what's the thoughts? Do you want to hear from, would you like to hear from McFarland or?
That's kind of what we do is like when we have a question, well, what do other municipalities do? I mean, that's kind of how we like to look at it too. I mean, sometimes this is new ground for us. I mean, have McFarland tell us, stop in, give us a presentation for a few minutes, tell us what they did. All right.
I, I guess I'm not sure that we're in a position to build a whole new building and put everything under one roof. I, I guess all we're looking at is selling some lots that are getting no use right now, so.
All right, Nick?
I think it's premature at this point to do that, so I think we might want to wait.
Okay. Larry?
I agree with Nick.
What's that?
I agree with Nick.
Okay. All right, I mean, we can hold off on it just so you know that we have a resource to work to.
Okay. That's why, that's why I asked, I didn't want to, I didn't want to bring something forward that you all weren't interested in, so.
All right. So, discuss and consider selection of listing agent for village-owned residential lots. And Matt had some information here, he'll get through it here.
Yeah, we sent out a request for qualifications and received six responses. Narrowed that list from six to three, and those were in, in the packet, bolded it, underlined the top three based on the commission that they propose, charging their experience, knowledge of Cottage Grove, chamber membership, other local affiliations, things like, things like that. And then there's a cover letter, some of the information that they provided from, from each of those top three in the packet.
I guess the question then is how to proceed if, if Matt found the top three as far as cost and based on qualifications. Do you want to just let him pick one?
All, all, all the top three are, are local and active in the trin, in, in the chamber and local, locally here.
Is there a significant price difference between the three as far as?
No, they were all essentially the same, although Kyle, Kyle Broome of Badger Realty had a five point nine percent commission, the others had six, so.
Any thoughts?
I, I guess just based on commission rate, I would, you know, propose that we have Kyle Broome be the listing agent.
All right, Nick?
I would second that motion.
Okay. Motion and a second, Forrest?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, Larry?
I, I would agree with that.
Okay. Simply based on numbers and in their fact that they're qualified bids, that's fine with me. So, they have a motion and a second for Kyle Broome to have Matt contact him regarding proceeding with the sales.
Can I just ask a question of the board, and it is, do you, do you want to see the contract with Kyle or just, I mean, it's going to be for standard and we'll know what the percentage is? Is that brought back to the board or are we authorized to proceed with?
I'm, if this is in the contract, I mean, real estate is a pretty standard contract, I think, I'm, I'm fine if you proceeding there.
I, I guess I would assume that we'll, it'll be based on the terms that are in here. One thing I noticed about Kyle's, what Kyle had, had stated in his response, it would be six months, or I think the others were twelve months, and I think that one reason I thought it would be good to go with Kyle would be the six-month timeframe instead of having it be twelve months, see what happens in six months. Also, I don't know that we've discussed the price that would be set, so the question I have is that something we would ask the realtor to come back with some different pricing? Can we discuss that in the future?
To discuss with the board, all right.
I can invite him to the next meeting then.
Okay.
Forrest, that sound good?
Yes.
Larry?
Good.
All right, so, motion and a second then to proceed with Kyle Broome. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes. Forrest, a second. We are down to new business and we covered item A swearing in of Officer Captain Grant. We have eight B discussing, consider block party application for Heidi Schrockenthaler at four oh six West Oak Street. Chief, any comments, questions on that, is it?
No, we're fine with it.
Okay. All right. These happen periodically, owners, property owners have a block party and they get signatures of residents and communicate it to the police. If there's no problem, I'll make a motion to approve Heidi's application.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the block party application for Heidi Schrockenthaler. Any other discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Eight C is discuss and consider new operators license applications for licensing here July twenty seventeen to June twenty eighteen. Any questions on any of those in your package? Chief, any comments on any other issues?
No, I think they all passed.
Okay.
These are, were these all new? I see they're new, but were these people that just had gotten their applications in on?
Right. So, they, they missed kind of the deadline, so that's why we ran them as new, but some of them have held an operator's license prior to this.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like. And they're all went through the training?
Yes.
Everybody's good.
Yes.
All right. I'll move approval of the operators license applications for June twenty seventeen to July, June twenty eighteen, sorry, July twenty seventeen to June eighteen.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the operator license applications. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. We have a small proclamation here, this is for Arbor Day, and I can pretty much do this every year. It's not too long, so I'll read it here quick. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas trees are a renewable source of paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires and other countless wood products, and whereas the village desires to continue to recognize the benefits of trees in the community and to continue its tree planting program, now therefore I jack and the president of the Village of Cottage Grove to hereby recognize that on April twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, the Village of Cottage Grove Forester and Community will celebrate this day as Arbor Day. And in the Village of Cottage Grove, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our village's community forestry program, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of present and future generations.
It's a retroactive celebration.
Yeah, I was going to say, might as well put next year's date on there too.
Is, is everyone comfortable with the language? Couple of years ago, we had about an hour discussion about this.
Seriously?
Any issues with that? If not, okay.
Controversial topic.
Yeah, I guess we need a formal motion, so I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the Arbor Day proclamation. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Eight E, I had a conversation with Matt because I wasn't sure what a weed commissioner was either, but I'll let Matt talk about the appointment of the weed commissioner.
Sure. And, and I think Lee's going to cover that, but it was just something we noticed in the ordinance is, it actually says that annually we're supposed, the board is supposed to appoint a weed commissioner. That person's always been the person in the position of public work, public works director, and it's just continued to roll over, but once in a while, we notice, notice things in the ordinances that, you know, haven't been noticed in a while, so.
Sure.
Anything else, Lee?
Well, it's a lot of responsibility over, it does not carry any extra pay. But you point the weed commissioner to deal with public nuisances, which is actually listed in the, in the ordinances under two twenty-four dash two, if you ever wanted to check that out. So, as Matt said, this has always been the person who is leading public works or head of public works who's been a weed commissioner.
Sure.
But it's something we should, we should do annually, and we've been talking about trying to have kind of a master list of these kinds of things so that we can approve Arbor Day several months before Arbor Day is and things like this too, so.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds, I mean, it's just housekeeping with ordinances, I, I don't have a problem with it. Is there any possible way to make it for tenure of the position, but you have to do it annually? I mean, it's.
I, I don't think that the, I, I know that it's discussed in statute, I didn't actually go check that out, but, you know, we can check on that and certainly report back to the board.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other discussion? If somebody wants to make a motion, I'd, you up for that job?
Let's, let's see, I have another candidate.
Okay. All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I move to make, have J J V R weed commissioners. That sounds exciting.
I second it.
All right, motion and a second to designate weed commissioner as the director of public works. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Normally gets a machete and a big helmet too, so.
All right. Item eight F and eight G are kind of tied together, but we have to take them separately just for procedural reasons. On Mellett, Matt and Erin and Mike, they gets talked about the bids, if you recall, this was for the Gaston Road Urbanization Project.
Actually, school road and.
The school road and, I'm sorry.
Intersection. Mike passing out the bid information. There, there's also a, award notification in the packet. There, there are two items because the previous bidding process, we had one, one bidder and it came in over the, over the budgeted amount, so MSA reconfigured the project that would still allow us to meet the needs of, of the intersection, but also to come in hopefully under budget, which it did, and Mike can go over that.
I clicked on my hyper, my hyperlink and brought up weed commissioner or something, so. We've got the new bid here for the second item. For the first item, we, we got bids in just one bid and we brought it up for discussion last month, and said there's some things we can do to the design to bring it within budget, still signalizing the intersection, but just cutting down on the amount of work we're doing on County N at this time. There's a future project that was planned in, in two five to carry the school road intersection back to the commerce park, and this project never was completing that segment down to, say, landmarks, headquarters on Limestone Pass, so carrying the boulevard up and so forth. So, we just shrank down the footprint and replaced some of the, the items, you know, that were a lot of island and a lot of permanent gutter, so that the amount of N we were building at this time was cut back. We're still putting in full signals, left turn bays, et cetera, into the intersection. The original bid came in in excess of seven hundred thousand, we only received the one bid, and we just want to officially reject that bid before we make an award for new bids. So, that's the request for the first item here.
Okay. I think that explains it fairly well. I guess I will make a motion that we reject the bid of June 15 for the County Road N and School Road improvements, and then proceed with looking at other bids.
That would be the June 15 bid?
June 15, yeah.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to reject the June 15 bid for County Highway N and School Road improvements based on the cost. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. And I'll let Mike explain the breakdown of the new bid.
Sure, and the new item is the July 13 bid opening from last week. We have a base bid low and that carries through with some of the alternates we put in there, and that low bidder is Humbert Contractors. The base bid was 342,06620, and we would like to recommend all these items. The bid alternate one replaces a culvert with a storm sewer that will help with the future development of the storm sewer as the road progresses back to the north, adjoining with the Commerce Park. And we just broke that out in case, but that's something really pretty critical, the project. Bid alternate two, all the islands and the narrower, hard to maintain areas, you know, at an intersection when you're putting in crosswalks, we have a, just like down at the Commerce Park on the islands, it's a stamped to a brick look, concrete capping, and so we put that, broke that out as an alternative in replace of, in place of putting in, you know, a grassed area, and that would cut down on any kind of maintenance there in the middle of the intersection, for instance, so that came in at 13,000. And then the other, the other item isn't a critical item, but it's kind of the matching powder coated finished poles and such that we have in the Commerce Port part for the road signs, and that came in at $2,100.
And tax increment district number five, so this has been borrowed for previously this year, and TID number five is going to be paying back that debt through the taxing increment that's been generated by Tiff Five over time, so it'll be able to pay all this back.
So I have a total for the base bid and alternates of 397,542.20, and we're recommending the award to Humbert Contractors in the amount of 397,542.20.
So even with carrying through as the lowest bidder with the alternates, he's still lower than the base bid of the other two contractors, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, the stamped concrete to me, I guess, helps visualize the crosswalk and makes it a little more visible and the road and things too, it's not just color.
Right.
So, does the stamped crosswalk the entire crosswalk, or is it just the island?
It's just in the island areas, so the outer radiuses between the sidewalk, you'll have two sidewalks coming out to the intersection, for instance, there's small areas in there that just trying to do lawn maintenance.
Sure.
And that's difficult, but then out in the middle, the intersection, the tops of the medians that we're putting in will be stamped with concrete as well. And that's the biggest, biggest area.
Troy, what do you think about the alternates? Any questions on those? The storm sewer thing sounds pretty important.
Yeah, I think with the alternates, we're still coming in under, under budget, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so some of the other items that we have, City of Madison again has a quote, they're the hardest one to get the pricing on, but they were in the $50,000 range. They're going to pull the wire and, you know, and install the lighting that's out there as well as the signals, and we also have items going out for the lights, the poles themselves from Tapco and Enterprise Lighting with Madison putting, doing the install and bringing equipment themselves. That item we've estimated at around 100,000. So add the 100,000 to about 400,000. Our original estimate on this project was 525 plus 25,000 contingencies, so we're below, we're 25,000 below the original estimate for the borrowing that occurred, and then we have the contingency out there.
Okay. Nick, any questions?
No.
Of course.
Good.
Okay, Larry. I mean, it makes sense to me, it is, glad we got in under budget, so. Somebody wants to make a motion to accept this bid?
I'd make a motion of accept the bid from Humbert Contractors. I'll second that.
And that's with the alternate bids as well?
And, yes, with the alternate bids, one, two, and three.
Seconds.
Second that as well.
Okay. Motion in a second then to accept the bid from Humbert Contractors with alternate bid one, two, and three. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thanks, Mike, for the explanation.
This is the municipal board.
Okay.
Someone can get three copies of that.
Sure. There you are. Okay. I'll go through documents here, reports from village boards, commissions and committees, Parks Rec and Forestry, that's Jim, is that correct? I think he's not here, but I think that's Jim.
Jack, could I just mention something?
Sure.
In both the Parks Rec and Forestry Committee Agenda and the Public Works Agenda, there's a statement that says adjournment, the committee will adjourn no later than 9:30. Any agenda item not considered or remaining shall be forwarded to the next committee meeting. I'm all for having meetings that don't go past a certain time, but the problem is that with an agenda, when that's on the agenda, and then let's say you have a big issue, and then you want to go past 9:30, you really can't. And that's actually, this actually used to be on the village board.
I remember, yeah.
And it was somewhat summarily dismissed one night by the legislature president, so we stopped taking, putting it on there, but, you know, you're certainly free to do that, just understand that there are some, that, that creates a time limitation that might not otherwise need to be there.
Okay, rather than me telling everyone, maybe get a memo from you just suggesting we take that off. Good point. Law enforcement committee, we met on June 20, I believe it was, 27, sorry, fourth Tuesday, and I'll let Chief talk about what we covered there, the agenda's in your packet, he's hired another officer now, so.
Yeah, we, the update was about Administrative Services Manager, that was Callie Shomar that got that job, and we're doing interviews tomorrow for her former position because she was the Administrative Services Assistant, now she's a manager, so we have some really good candidates for the assistant position in our office, and we're interviewing, I believe, eight people tomorrow. I updated Fireman's Festival, basically there wasn't a lot to report, which is a darn good thing from our standpoint. We hired the 13th Police Officer, as you all met tonight, was Anthony Arndt, very happy to have him aboard. He completed the Police Academy late last year as an associate's degree, and he's from the Menasha area. Had some great interviews. Mid-year budget update, we are on course to be doing just fine in all our budget categories, so happy about that. We will be ordering a new police car for 2018. That's done with money that is set aside for the capital program. Troy also brought up the possibility of using unspent monies out of the budget, I don't know how that would work, but just that idea was brought up. Never know if you're gonna have unspent money, so that's the problem at the end of the year. We are talking with residents about forming a physical neighborhood watch program for the north central part of the Cottage Grove area, they've had some problems up there the past couple of years, not a lot, but some residents have expressed interest in forming a neighborhood watch, so we are all for that. And National Night Out is at Fireman's Park Tuesday, August 1st from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., free hot dogs, plenty of police and fire demonstrations, and this is a really good event for families to come out, bring their kids, get to meet police, and there's deputies and EMS will be there and the fire department will be there, and like I said, free hot dogs. We had it in Milton, and I think we had 3,000 people show up, so I'm not so sure we're gonna advertise the free hot dogs, but.
You just, you just did the viewership.
So, yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun. The Sheriff's Department does this in different villages and cities throughout the county, and it hasn't been in Village Cottage Grove for quite some time, so we're quite excited about it. And that is it.
All right, thank you. Community Development Authority, John is absent and excused tonight, but Nick, you're also on the CDA.
Yes, at our last meeting, we had invited Tom Byken to come in and discuss what uses he would expect to see on his land holdings, which are north of 94, and he laid out what his thoughts were, and he also provided information on some of the neighbors that he brought around there and what he was thinking they would want to do with the land, which I thought was very helpful. And we also continued our review of the, of the economic development chapter of the comprehensive plan. What did that mean?
I'll just add to that, Nick, that the Authority is also putting together kind of the process of, of pursuing the urban service area amendment, which would be necessary for, for that land, as well as looking into creating a new tax increment district out there, out there as well, so there's a process that goes with that, and there may be a budget request to utilize consultant, engineering and financial consultants to put together that TID plan.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. Let's see, Plan Commission, I, I'm on Plan Commission as well. The main thing at the Plan Commission, I mean, we talked about the outlot stuff a little bit, but Plan Commission voted unanimously, I think, to annex a territory from the township of Cottage Grove to the Village of Cottage Grove, that's a Helgland Family Farm that's up north of Morning Dove. In that area, the owner was here, the developer, former developer was not here, but I'll let Aaron and Matt tell you what the, any new plans are for it, just formality?
Yeah, the developer of what they were calling Drummond Grove has withdrawn their application. The owners would still like to move forward with the annexation part of it in preparation for selling the land as they plan to do. Any new developer that comes in will have to start over at the beginning with the plat process.
Okay.
As you mentioned, it was a unanimous vote that the Plan Commission was recognized as being in the public interest by the Wisconsin Department of Administration, so we recommend approval as well.
Questions, comments, board members on it? You all familiar with that, where that is? I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 042017, annexing territory from the township of Cottage Grove to the Village of Cottage Grove, Dane County, Wisconsin, Helgland Family Farm LLC annexation.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the annexation ordinance, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. One opposition. And abstentions? Motion passes. Okay?
Jack, one, one other item on the, you mentioned the outlots.
Yep.
There wasn't any formal motion from Plan Commission, but there was, there's a couple memos, I'm just gonna pass out and we can put it on a board agenda on the next meeting, but there's a, I'm gonna pass around a memo that you can preview and then have it discussed at the next meeting, but one, one from Mike Maloney, and then one from J.J. Larson, so I'll just pass that around.
There's actually more information than I thought I would learn, but it sounds like there's several anticipated purposes for outlots, could be proposed well site, could be water runoff, could be whatever, and there's some certain standards that we have to meet with outlots and things like that, but I just was interested in how they're created, why they're created, and what the requirements and standards are.
Jack, among Aaron, Matt, myself, Mike, we've also made contact with other municipalities to see what they do, what's their policy, so that people have an understanding of what other people are doing.
All right. Thank you, it's good to have the information. All right, Public Works and Properties, I think that's also Jim, or John, but John is not here, he's excused. Anything, J.J., Public Works and Properties?
Maybe you may as well move up to the table, you have a couple of items coming up anyway.
Sit in hot seat.
The only thing of note was, and it's been an item for a while, actually for a few years, but the committee, and I don't have the exact wording of the motion, but essentially said and voted unanimously to not sell or lease any of the Bonnie Road property without a plan for where that equipment and the operations are going on there.
Okay.
Otherwise, just an update on the road maintenance for the year and that we're halfway through with our sidewalk maintenance for the year.
Okay, much here. And Jack, J.J. has a couple, a couple update items under his report.
Sure.
Suggest maybe moving that up, if we cover those now, if that's okay.
I think we can just skip ahead to that and then back up to our comments.
The first one is, I wanted to give an update ahead of next week's Utility Commission meeting, we'll be discussing, Baker Tilly's coming to talk about the, what the rate impact would be for a planned upgrade of the lift station down on Main Street and installation of a long overdue forced main, basically replacing the old one that runs down Clark Street and putting it up progress, which actually that was planned for years ago because it's already piping underneath Main Street, underneath end.
Oh.
Over the progress. Just a little bit of background, I had a memo in the packet, but essentially the, there are a number of issues with the lift station, but primarily the biggest thing is that the wet well is undersized, so any retrofits are impossible without making this wet well bigger. So, there's issues with the pumps, we don't have submersible pumps, and we couldn't get submersible pumps into this wet well, so we have a lot of issues with the outdated vacuum priming system needed to bring up the liquid to the pumps above ground. Forced main on Clark Street's broken a number of times, which, that was another note I put in Clark Street's in the Financial Management Plan for reconstruction in 2019, so I think it'd be imperative this move forward before we put a good road over a bad pipe.
Right.
But anyway, without having all the numbers yet, Mike's put together the, some engineering estimates, talked about funding options for low interest loans, similar to clean water funds we've used on the water side for the sanitary system side, and then Greg from Ellers has analyzed how much TID money could be used there, and then Baker Tilly's gonna come and present what all of that would mean for rate impact over the next few years.
Just elaborate on the, on the. So, tax increment district number seven, when the planning was done for that in early 2000s, they actually foresaw that this would happen at, at some point during the TID's life, so that was included in the TID project plan to cover half the cost.
Okay.
So, the, that, that TID is performing well enough to be able to cut, just because it says it'll cover half, if it's not financially feasible, you know, we wouldn't put the TID in a bad place, but it's in a good place, so it can cover.
Just planning.
And then clean drinking water loan, generally we should, we should be able to get an interest rate, certainly in the low twos, if not even one, down to one and a half percent, so we should get a good, a good deal there, and the sewer utility is governed entirely by the Utility Commission, so we would not need Public Service Commission review or anything like that. So the commission has the authority to increase the rates on that, however, if it includes TID funding or borrowing, the, the board has a review, so they'll make a recommendation and it'll, it'll come back here.
Okay.
Eventually.
But you said it, and it's good enough where you don't have to dig up, and?
Yep.
Because it's bad enough south of here.
Yep. And will, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, and will remain untouched.
All right, thank you.
And the other item I had was an update on our PSC Construction Authorization Request for our Advanced Metering Infrastructure Technology. Long story short, the PSC required construction authorization for these types of projects where basically since 2013, we've been upgrading the water meters with advanced metering infrastructure, so essentially we'll be able to stop reading meters, and it will all, basically we'll add an antenna right up here, and when it's time to read the meters, it'll all be dumped into Cynthia's computer. into Cynthia's computer. Project started in 2013. At the time, the villagers did not, well, you didn't have to seek construction authorization through the PSC. We found through our work with the PSC last year and prior to that, through a thorough review before our water rates increased, that that was probably something that should be looked at. Reached out to PSC, they said, yep. So I submitted a construction authorization retroactively. They opened up two cases, or one was called an investigation into the work done from 2013 to 2016. We've gotten our final reprimand from the Public Service Commission, but in that official document, we are allowed to seek recovery of those costs in future rate cases. So essentially, that's as good as it gets and something like that. They basically said, we're okay now with the work that's been done the last three years. And anticipate getting the official construction authorization to move forward with the rest of the meters, probably within a couple months.
So just switching out water meters in people's houses is considered construction?
If you cross a certain threshold of dollars spent, whether you take, that's, the argument I made was with the staff we have, we haven't done it fast enough to cross the threshold, but they said even if it took us a decade, the money in total would have crossed the threshold, so we need the authorization.
All right.
That should all be resolved within a couple months.
All right.
Thank you.
So, and just as an aside, I mean, we actually told them that we were doing this, and this generates this investigation, but having worked with them on this other issue, we are not the target at all. There are several municipalities in Wisconsin which have apparently done this on a pretty regular basis, and they're upset about that, and so that's why they're kind of cracking down on these things. But we've been made aware of it, and it's due to our plan to avoid that in the future.
Okay. Good, thank you. All right, that brings us to comments from village officers. Troy?
Maybe we have to wait till the next meeting. We had a functional exercise.
I think if you want to go ahead and tell them, maybe, otherwise, it's a month later.
You want me to wait?
Go ahead.
Oh, so we had a functional exercise. Basically, what involved, we had police, fire, a bunch of folks upstairs in the fire, firehouse, and downstairs in emergency government. They basically enacted like we're having some sort of emergency, you know, we're having disorder generators, we're, you know, EOC is activated. It was actually a very good exercise in identifying some deficiencies, like the phone lines that we have down there. Struggle to find the phones that would work, and then, you know, the phone lines that are down there, I mean, it's the main number for the fire station, it's the main number for EMS, and very educational from that perspective. But I also want to remind folks, in September, we have an all-day full-scale exercise, Saturday the sixteenth. But it was very eye-opening as to how, I guess, unrepaired we might be. And yet, we did very well, you know, as a whole, I think, but the phones were definitely an issue.
Oh, yeah. And it was good to see, in my mind, how all these pieces of Dane County and whatever fit together with our plan and things like that. Thank you. Mick?
Nothing additional.
Forrest?
Just want to bring up, I saw some chatter online on a website called Nextdoor.com, which has a Cottage Grove section. A few people complaining about the number of Japanese beetles in the area. I don't know if we have any program in place for any pest control or anything. I did just want to bring it up.
We have a board commission.
I was going to say the weed man might be. Part of the duties.
So I just wanted to make notes.
I agree, they're bad. We are.
Yeah, if there's, if there is not a program, there is some small amount of interest in the program.
Good. That sounded good to me. Larry?
No, Larry, go ahead.
All right. Nothing from my end. Hope everybody's having a good summer and a good Fourth of July. I think, the only thing I think we should consider is our next village board meeting, just looking at the calendar, how we have three possible meeting dates this month, I guess, if I'm looking correctly at July. We skipped the third, today's the seventeenth, and we also have the thirty-first, and then...
But then we might have it, then the August one would come up real quick.
Yeah, so I mean, I just would like to get that into consideration, but that's all I have. Lee?
Yesterday, reading the newspaper, there's a columnist, his name escapes me, but he was talking about the fact that one of the state legislators has a blog, I guess, and then Jeff Simpson from our school district has been badgering, I mean, badgering is the wrong word, but has been sending him information, and so he's now blocked him from that blog. And, you know, it just caused me to think about some of the implications of that in terms of, you know, if you, if you're involved in a blog of some kind and others are commenting, you know, we, the village is aware that, you know, if you can get a conversation going among enough trustees, that can be considered, you know, open record. So I need to look into this and just try to figure out what exactly they're talking about, but just as a, as a heads up, if you're involved in any of the, any of the social media where others can be, where you can be responding or talking with more than a forum of the board, you've got to be real careful of that. So I, and it's, the Attorney General's Office very kindly said, well, we have no, no thing, Forrest. And, but it's just something to keep in mind that, you know, the statutes have really not kept up with social media, and we don't want to inadvertently be doing something that we shouldn't be doing, so just be careful.
Sure. Thanks.
Matt? Yes, Jack, just your comment about the July fourth meeting. In the future, on a week like that, we could, we could move it to a Thursday. That would, generally, Thursdays are a little bit, a little bit lighter.
Okay.
And I think it also depends probably on the amount of agenda items, but to keep it on a more regular schedule, we could certainly move it to a different day of that week in the future.
I'm fine with it if we want to do it, it's just that then we've got another meeting, like, less than a week later, it's undebatable.
Touch base on some of the emergency management plan stuff that Troy was mentioning. He passed on to me the draft of the plan. I sent it to staff for comments, and I'll get those back to you, Troy, and, you know, the committee can, you know, just some comments if they want to, you know, to take, you know, some suggestions potentially that could be implemented. And regarding the poll call presentation, just something else that staff thought that would be real useful for that application would be during the budget process, to ask certain questions on a, on an item. Not that you'd necessarily want to put departments up against departments, but when it comes down to the last couple items that we're looking to cut, certain questions could be asked, and those could be included in, in the memos. And then also, I think staff's aware that if you're going to have that tool, even when the information might not be to your liking, you still have to provide the data every time, be consistent in the staff report. So, anyway, just a couple thoughts on that. That's it.
Aaron?
With Summit's architect again today, they're still on track to submit this month for the August Plan Commission, so it should be here to you guys as soon as mid-August meeting.
All right, sounds good. Chief?
Nothing.
Okay. Mike? John? J.J.?
I'm good.
Very good. Awesome. Bring this down to item eleven, Communications and Miscellaneous Business. Approval, discuss and consider approval of vouchers. Any questions on what you see in the vouchers?
Jack, the police department bills for top pack defense or whatever, that was, that's incorrect. There's...
Okay.
Cynthia knows about it, we told her about it, so we're going to be taking off sixteen ninety-seven off of that. One thousand six hundred and ninety-seven will be removed. It was a double billing and, and...
Okay.
Wasn't caught.
All right, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Anything from trustees on the vouchers? If not, I'll make a motion to approve with the correction from Chief Labor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the vouchers with the correction from sixteen hundred and ninety-seven dollars from Chief Labor. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Correspondence? Anything? Future agenda items, I guess we'll put the poll call presentation on for the future. Anything from other trustees?
Could I, we're not having a meeting on the thirty-first, right?
That's why I was just curious what our plan was. I don't think we got, we're just going right into August.
Well, I mean, we can do whatever you guys would like to do.
Okay, I mean, I don't...
I meant to ask as a question on it.
I'm just saying, because we skipped the fourth, but I don't think there's anything pressing that we need to meet on the thirty-first versus September or August seventh, is there any?
Not that I don't think that August seventh would be...
Okay. Everybody?
Unless, Matt, you see something that yours?
I'll be asking. We'll be up there first.
Okay. So that's one vote for August seventh.
On the thirty-first, I've got Nat Vic Landfill being on the calendar at six-thirty for that.
Okay, so the seventh, probably works. Larry, the seventh. All right, thank you, that doubled that, I guess. I appreciate it.
It's going to take some time.
Yeah.
I know, thanks, Eric.
All right, anything else for future agenda items? Matt?
The outlot discussion.
The outlot, yep. I think for many other trustees, and one of the things that we were thinking of doing too is if there's future agenda items, maybe we'll have a form, in-house form for trustees to fill out, just to make sure it's tracked and gotten on agendas, just where it came from, you can provide your information on there. You want to second it with somebody, but it's just a creation of an in-house form, nothing real serious, just more of a paper trail than anything of where stuff originates. Put that on there, I guess, I could put that under mine, under my section. All right. Next item is closed session. At this point, I'll make a motion that the village of Cottage Grove Village Board enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, conducting other specified business whenever competitive and/or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Negotiate terms for potential development in Congress Park. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I will, roll call, both. Troy?
Aye.
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 Forrest?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in closed session, we can take five minutes.